Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, October 10th, 2022. I now call the meeting.
No mic.
My mic is on. So I now call the meeting to order. Unfortunately, our chairman is feeling a bit under the weather today. We wish him well. It's time for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join Commissioner Toler, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Toler. Anna, will you please do a roll call?
Vice Chair Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas is absent. Commissioner Toler?
Here.
Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Commissioner Vivar?
Here.
Commissioner Erith?
Present.
Thank you. No announcements or presentations tonight, which brings us to public comments. The public is invited to come forward and speak on any items that are within our jurisdiction, but not on the agenda. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand to be recognized when it's your turn. And if you're on the phone, press star nine and wait to be recognized. You'll be given three minutes. There'll be a bell which will ring, giving you a one-minute warning. And the mic cuts off after three, so you can begin to wrap up your comments when you hear the bell. Please go ahead.
I'd like to thank you for being such, so dedicated, Mr. Zid. I wish that all of America were as dedicated as you. But I'm going to be here about Gym 12 at 140 Seventeenth Street, as usual. So per the California Buildings Code, Section 715.4.7 states, "Fire-rated doors must be automatic or self-closing and latching." In common terms, this means that the fire-rated doors cannot be held open by any unapproved means, such as a wedge or string tied to a wall. So the front door that the gym always has open is a fire safety door, you know, and they always have it opened. And the side door that they open has a "do not enter" sign. I was going to submit pictures, but I couldn't figure out the email address. But anyways, that's being propped open. And not only is it being propped open, they're putting a fan in front of it. So when was the last time it was legal to put something in front of a fire safety door? I don't think that's ever been legal. Now we're going to move on to Page 7 and 6 of the noise element. We're going to bring up the exterior noise level for a gym, according to the state of California, should be zero. Okay? So that means we should not hear one beat of bass coming out of this gym. Now we're going to move on to Costa Mesa, 13.280. It says, "In the event the alleged fence noise consists of music," you know, "it should be lowered by five decimals at each proximity." 13.277 says, "It is the city's purpose to prohibit unnecessary, excessive, and annoying noises from any sources subject to its police power." So I called the police about the gym on a Saturday, and the police kindly told me to just call the gym and ask them to be quiet. So the gym really can't do anything, or the police really can't do anything about this gym. So I'm wondering, you know, are they under the police power? I don't understand why they are allowed to bring us from, I have evidence on my phone of decibels, where we're at 28, and they bring us up to 52. Okay? That's a lot of decimals to bring us up. Our normal decimals are just, I mean, we get the planes, we get a little bit of traffic noise, but where I live is nice and peaceful. And this bass is taking us up to 40, 50, 55, sometimes 60 decibels. And it's just, boom, boom, boom. Woo! Here we go. Three, two, one. Just anything. This gym is lawless, and it just feels like nobody's doing anything about it. But a person, okay, so I didn't get to this, but primary access, so in 7A1859, it says that there's an access off Cabrillo. There definitely is no access off Cabrillo. In the original 9246, all aerobics classes are prohibited. They're having group aerobics classes. Aerobics is intake of oxygen. Anything that makes you intake more oxygen is aerobics. And that is what they're doing, and it's against the law. And anywhere it says six, there's, the six is, in the morning till eight at night, is the only hours that I can find in 92.46 or the other one, the 18.59. So why are they even open at 5:00 a.m.? And where are all the other CUPs for every two years? Okay? They're all missing. Nobody can find them. I got 2019. Where's my 2021s? Does this gym even have a CUP to operate? Okay? Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. Mr. Drapkin, you've got notes from her comments?
Particularly the fire-rated door. I'm curious about that, if it's got an automatic closure on it.
So a fire-rated door, when it has a requirement to close, it's required to do, to compartmentize a building. In a fire-rated door situation, the fire would always want the door to be open. So except for on the interior of the building, where it wouldn't want it to spread, an exterior door would always be better off if it was wide open, obviously. So it doesn't apply to an exterior door.
All right. Thank you. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Good evening. Commissioner Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. First, I want to just let you know that the city does a service for people with hearing impairment, and that's why I'm wearing the headphones, because the service the city provides. I apologize to you, Mr. Zid, for the disturbance earlier. It had reset itself to zero somehow, and I apologize for that. So I just want you to be aware of that, that otherwise. Secondarily, I'm curious what provisions of Measure K set or impose new fees on developmental, different than what's already in effect by state and local laws. Secondarily, what actually give you a fee schedule for that? Third, what specific provisions actually set school fees for development and actually require them to be paid by a new law, because those laws exist right now? And that's a concern of mine. Is there a provision in Measure K that specifically requires any kind of housing of any kind affordable, otherwise, for anybody, anyhow? Is the joint session that your chair said he wanted to set up with the City Council, is that set by now? Has anybody set? Because the inclusionary housing ordinance is the thing that is kind of quasi-in control of how we decide what housing gets built, but it in itself does not, will not, require housing per se. It'll require that when you build a project, a percentage of that project will be affordable. But it doesn't say you must build housing. So I'm just looking for if that specific joint session has been set. And if not, I would love to hear why not? Because it would seem to me that Measure K depends on that inclusionary housing ordinance that doesn't exist right now and hasn't existed. And in fact, when we had numerous opportunities, we had a developer come in and tell us how proud he was of the development he made and everything else. Unfortunately, not one of those units were affordable. So we just get ourselves backwards sometimes, and I would like you guys to figure out whether this makes sense or not. I do thank you very much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. The residents, not only of Costa Mesa, but of every city, expect that their government is going to protect the residents, is going to protect in ordinances and laws, and do the best that's for the residents. But when you get something like K, and you get this flyer that came out, and one of the things that says, "Maintain local control," number one thing in K is that it takes the vote away from the residents to maintain and have some input into their own future of their city. So we're paying for this dribble that they're putting out on our dime. All of their things are preserve, revitalize. These are all high hopes. These are not, these are not certainties. We hope, they should have said, "We hope it preserves." It may revitalize. Oh, well, maybe it'll create affordable housing. These are all wannabe, high-hopes, jellybeans-and-unicorn kind of promises in this flyer that we're paying for. So we're supposed to trust our government. We're supposed to trust our planning commission when we have a planning commissioner who is on the pack for yes on K, which just took almost $60,000 from developers. We're supposed to trust our planning commissioner and our government when one of the planning commissioners is like a social media mouthpiece for yes on K. Who speaks out for the people? They have all the money, all the power. They wrote it, they vote on it, and now they're trying to put it down the throat of the residents. And the residents have no say. This is an absolute abomination on the voters. But you know what? The voters are smarter. We trust the voters. Unfortunately, the council and the city do not trust the voters. The voters voted Y in at almost 70%. We'll see what happens with K. But the money that is coming in from the developers should tell everybody. Why are the developers so anxious for K to pass? Why? Because there is money upon money upon money and profits that are due. So in their little, their little saying is, "K is for kindness." I say K is for kerfuffle, and kerfuffle is a commotion that has a bad outcome.
Thank you, ma'am. Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Nor the telephone?
No, we do not.
All right. All right. That takes us to Commissioner comments. And let's see, Mr. Erith, would you like to kick us off?
Thank you, Chair. And thanks to the public for being out here today. We always love your participation and your comments. It's great to hear everyone's point of view. So thank you very much for being here. I'll also start out by saying Happy Indigenous Peoples' Day today. And I do want to follow up on one of the questions from the members of the public. Do we have any additional information about the joint session with our colleagues on City Council? Mr. Drapkin?
Not at this moment. I don't have any.
Okay. Will you keep us posted if that develops, please?
Sure.
Okay. And beyond that, I don't have much more to share than to just remind the public that the Scarecrow Festival is happening next Saturday. So if you can attend, please attend. It's always fun. It's one of Costa Mesa's longest traditions, and it's a great way to meet some of your neighbors. So with that being said, thank you, Chair. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, sir. Yes, all right. Yes, all right. I also want to second my colleague, Commissioner Erith, on thanking Mr. Humphrey and the other members of our community. To the first public commentator, please do follow up with staff regarding the concerns with the gym, and we do hope that that gets addressed. And also, I wanted to thank everybody else for participating in today's meeting. I just wanted to thank the city for a great job with the walk-to-school events that are happening with the various elementary schools in our city. We have another walk-to-school event this Wednesday, October 12th, in which I've signed up to participate with Wilson Elementary Schools. So I hope that some of you who live in those communities may be able to participate with the schools. And if you have kids or grandchildren, that you may participate in this as well and bring awareness to the importance and the benefits of having the opportunity to walk safely to school. And besides that, I don't think I have anything else tonight, Mr. Chairman, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Russell?
Good evening. I just want to encourage everyone to go to the Orange County Museum of Art. We had a grand opening on this last weekend. It's spectacular. It's going to be free for the next 10 years, thanks to a local businessperson. It was very exciting to see all of the young people there. I think they had, they estimate they had over 10,000 people come in over the 24-hour period, and there were fireworks and donuts and all kinds of great stuff. And so next, let's see, tomorrow it'll be open, free. Go and see what the community has to offer. Also, there is an art exhibit down at the Senior Center right now. It's a local artist, and she does some very whimsical kinds of art. And it's Bonnie Matthews. And I just, I just encourage you to go down and look at that, to see what's available in the community. So that's all for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell, for those announcements. Commissioner Toler?
Sure. Real quick, I'll just echo Commissioner Vivar, and giving a shout-out to staff, Public Works especially, and our Police Department, who made Walk to School Day such a success again on the east side. Going to Kaiser and Woodland, there were probably over 100 people parading through the street, totally taking over the street. It was really cool. It's a really cool annual tradition in Costa Mesa. I really hope that we can keep doing that every year, Bike to School Days in May. We want to keep working to make biking and walking to school more safe and comfortable every day. Also, the Scarecrow Festival is coming up. I encourage everybody to go Saturday afternoon at Lyons Park. Last year, the winning scarecrow was the Costa Mesa Alliance for Better Streets. It was riding a bicycle. This year, we'll see what they have, and we'll see who wins. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Only comment I've got is to thank Mr. Yang and the Transportation Department for addressing my concerns on Placentia. It was a pleasure to drive it this week, and thank you for what work you've done over there. All right. We have no consent calendar items tonight. We have three public hearings. And Anna, if you will read the first public hearing item into the record.
Public hearing item number one, Planning Application 22-20 and Tentative Parcel Map 22, 2022-140 for a four-unit residential small lot subdivision development at 549 Bernard Street. Please note, we have not received public comments on this item. This is a call for any expertake communications.
Commissioners, any expertake communications?
No.
Okay. All righty. Mr. Drapkin?
Thank you, Vice Chair Zick and members of the commission. This applicant, application was being reviewed by staff for a final round, and after noticing it, we discovered some circulation issues and met with the applicant and discussed continuing of it so we could sort of resolve some issues. And basically, that's staff's recommendation to give the applicant some time to revise his plans and consider some of the code requirements for some circulation on the site and continue it to November 14th.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant here tonight? No? Okay. I'll open the public hearing in the event there's anyone in the public that wishes to speak to the continuance of this item. No? Then I'll close the public hearing and bring it to the dais for motion. Commissioner Russell?
Yes. I move that the Planning Commission continue this public hearing till November 14th, 2022. This is Planning Application 22-20 and Tentative Partial Map 22-878, 2022-140 for a four-unit residential small lot subdivision development at 549 Bernard Street.
And that is to a date certain of November 14th? Correct?
Correct.
All right. And I will second that. Any comments?
No.
Okay. All right. Anna, call the vote, please.
That motion carries 5-0 with Commissioner, with Chair DeRico and Commissioner Rojas absent.
Great. Thank you very much. I don't suppose that's a decision that's appealable, is it? Okay. All right. That takes us-
Technically, it is appealable. All decisions by the Planning Commission are appealable, but it's a 10-day appeal period-
All right.
-for the public view.
Okay. So the public's on notice for that. All right. Anna, public hearing item number two, please.
Public hearing item number two, Planning Application 22-09 for a conditional use permit to operate an adult daycare facility in the planned development commercial PDC zone at 1901 Newport Boulevard. Please note, we have not received public comments on this item. This is a call for any expertake communications.
Commissioner Erith?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I held a 10- to 15-minute call with the applicant's agent, Mr. Luis Gomez.
Thank you. Commissioner Vivar?
No, sir. Nothing to report.
Nothing.
Nothing to report.
Okay. And I have nothing to report either. So, Mr. Drapkin, a presentation, please.
Thank you, Vice Chair Zick. Yeah, I'll have that presentation up. Anna, can you bring that up for me? Planning Application 2209 is a request for a CUP to establish an adult daycare facility in the planned development commercial zone. The project is proposed in the Newport Plaza Center, located at the intersection of Newport Boulevard and West 19th Street. Newport Plaza has a large lease area and a history of numerous tenant types throughout the site's history. And its tenants include professional offices, banquet facilities, churches, day spas, and group counseling. The proposed adult daycare facility would replace primarily a previously-approved day spa and is proposed approximately 12,000 square feet in area. The daycare facilities are permitted uses within this, with a CUP approval by the Planning Commission in the PDC zoning district. The proposed operation is from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., seven days a week, and client services will function from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The applicant proposes to serve approximately 270 clients and operate from, and have about 40 staff employees. All clients will be dropped off and picked up, and therefore, staff does not believe any parking or traffic issues are expected. Clients for the proposed use generally include seniors and other adults that require care because of chronic illness or health situations, and may also have certain cognitive limitations. The types of clients, services include personal care, caregiver support, physical therapy, and recreational activities. This slide shows an aerial photograph of the site and the existing and adjacent area zoning. As with many areas in Costa Mesa, the commercial area surrounding area also includes a mix of residential uses. This slide shows photographs from the adjacent public areas, including the front of the property along West 19th Street and the other side of the property along Newport Boulevard. This slide shows photographs from the adjacent public areas included, of the, next slide, sorry about that. This slide shows the proposed drop-off pickup areas for the proposed adult daycare facility, and the lower photo to the right shows the proposed front entrance to the facility. This slide shows in the dark gray the proposed lease area, which includes a large portion of the bottom floor of the three-entry Newport Plaza structure. And this slide shows the previous tenant spaces that the adult daycare will occupy, which includes Suite 156, Suite 176, Suite 180, Suite 179, and Suite 190. Predominantly, the areas, including Suite 180 and Suite 190, were occupied by the daycare, by the day spa, I should say. In order to ensure operations will not impact the adjacent uses in the surrounding neighborhood, staff has included conditions of approval for operating hours, shuttling of clients, and other conditions to avoid potential use impacts. After reviewing the requested application, staff believes that the CUP compatibility finance can be made, and recommends that the Planning Commission approve the CUP and the categorical exemption. And this concludes staff's presentation, and staff is available to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Drapkin. Commissioner Toler, any questions of staff?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Russell?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Questions for staff?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Drapkin. I am curious about the proposed recreational areas. So do we know how much of a square footage they're proposing for that recreational area? And would that be completely indoors on the roof?
It will be under roof, and I'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to respond to that question with regards to what the recreational facilities will exist of and where they are.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Drapkin. That's it. No questions, no further questions, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner Erith, any questions of staff?
Thank you, Chair. I have no questions for staff, but a couple for the applicant later. Thank you.
Okay. I will open the public hearing, ask whether the applicant or applicant's representative is present. And could you come forward to the podium, please, sir? And if you could give me your name and let me know if you have read the staff report, the conditions of approval, and if you agree with them.
My name is Luis Gomez. I'm with Go Urban Development. I'm the authorized agent for the applicant, Mr. Lee, who's also here in attendance tonight. We have read the full staff report, and we've also read through the conditions of approval and do agree to the conditions as written.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a presentation you'd like to make?
Just a brief presentation, not much more than what Mr. Drapkin has already provided. First of all, I do want to thank the planning staff. They've done a great job. We've worked extensively through this project. We spent several months of going through the process, and they've asked a lot of great questions and really made our team think about the project itself and the operation. And I want to thank them for that, that helped us process through our thoughts here. So again, I'm Luis Gomez, Go Urban Development. Mr. Lee, who's the chief operating officer for the La Palma Adult Health Care Center Company, is here tonight and is available to answer any questions. I do want to let you know that this is not some fly-by-night operation. The company's been in operation for several years. Mr. Lee himself has over 25 years of industry experience. And in addition to that, I want to introduce Mr. Kim, who's sitting here behind me. He's with Corbell Architects, and he's the executive architect on the project. Given that, again, we are here in request of a CUP for an adult daycare facility at the Newport Plaza. Again, really, our primary target is elderly, but we are open to other folks or adults who are in need of the services. And essentially, what we're providing is a daily service for those who live with perhaps, you know, a son or a daughter, and that son or daughter needs to go to work. We offer a solution where you can drop off the adult, or the participant, as we like to refer to them to, as, and go to work, come back, and just offer that sort of service on a daily basis. Again, we do provide personal care, social services, transportation to and from. So I want to make that point. I know parking tends to be an issue, particularly these sorts of facilities. The city has asked to survey some of our other facilities, and what we pointed out is we're at about a 97% use rate of our, of our transportation services. Again, the majority, if not all, of our participants are expected to use either the shuttle service or be- or be dropped off directly by the caregiver. We provide meals, therapeutic activities throughout the day. I also want to point out, we're operating from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We do have staff coming early to prepare. We do have staff staying a little bit later to close out, but really, it's an 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM operation. We're not looking to have overnight stays or any of that sort of service. Given that, we've already talked about the parking, but I will reiterate that we've gone through the analysis with the planning staff, and we did determine that even with the shared parking analysis, I believe that at its peak, you're at still a surplus of 45 stalls. So again, that was with some conservative estimates in terms of our parking demand, but I think we'll we support the analysis and feel that it's appropriate. Finally, just want to leave you with some thoughts here. Look through some demographics for the city. You're at about 115,000, your population of 115,000, of which about, according to the U.S. Census Bureau anyway, 12% is roughly elderly, 65 and older. So that's about 13,600 residents. In addition, if you add in veterans who also could be users of our service, it's another approximately 4,000 residents. That's about 15% of the city's population. That's, you know, possibly someone that may be in need of our service, and I think we're providing a great service for those folks. I do also want to add that, when possible, we do like to hire local folks, and in addition to that, we order our food and services from local providers when possible. So I think we're going to be a great addition to the city. I hope that you feel the same, and I hope that we're able to get an approval tonight, and we can go out and build our facility out, and open up, and be ready for business here quickly. So again, Mr. Kim is here to answer any questions, Mr. Lee as well. If you have any questions, we're here.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Gomez. Let's start with Commissioner Erith.
Thank you Chair. I'll start by saying, Mr. Gomez, thank you for the presentation. It was a real pleasure to talk with you this morning. I think I'll start off by asking, the adult daycare service is open for basically any adult technically, right?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. And I think, I will mention, as a business, I think what you're proposing here is really kind of near and dear to me personally. I reflected my time in college early on, where I was one of my grandmother's primary caregivers, and as much of an honor and privilege as it was, it does create a lot of pressure sometimes for families. So I'm glad that businesses like this exist. And I think, as far as a population, especially an aging population, like what we have here in Costa Mesa, it becomes ever more important to reconcile with the aging that we do see going on in our community. So with that said, I think that's really all my comments. I really don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, sir. Thank you for your presentation. Just a quick question, following up on my earlier question to Mr. Drapkin regarding the planned recreational area, would you mind telling me a little bit more about that? I'm sure you have other recreational areas at, you know, your other facilities, so what kind of things do you plan to have there, activities and whatnot?
Sure, I'm going to turn the mic to Mr. Kim. He's our executive architect, and he'll go ahead and answer that.
Thank you.
Hi, this is David Kim, the project architect. About the recreation facility there, there is a very many mixtures of the event that will go there, because adults come here. Probably you saw our plan. The plan shows many tables and chairs, but that is for fire department to show what is the maximum occupant load on that space, that the multi-use area. So I cannot say it's certain, the recreation activity will happen on a certain place, but it is more rather general area that a senior will have a general recreation activity. It could be dancing, it could be whatever, that the programmer, who's here is operators, and then she can answer actually what kind of activities is, will happen, if you are curious. Do you want to have more specific answers on that?
I think I'm all right. Yeah, thank you for your explanation. Yeah, that makes sense, that, you know, it could be, I guess, anywhere within the facility. Let's see, questions. What is the maximum amount of the participants or adults being served that?
270, maximum.
All right. And do you have a ratio for, like, the number of your staff per participants or adults being?
We do have a 40 staff.
Okay. All right, well, I think that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you again for your presentation, and I'm glad that you're considering Costa Mesa for your services.
Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Commissioner Russell?
I just had a couple of questions. First of all, you mentioned local providers of food. What kind of, what kind of provider is that? Hospital?
Do you want to go ahead and answer it?
Hi, my name is Kaylee. I'm with La Palma Adult Day Healthcare Center. We will be the operator for this new location here in Costa Mesa. So as far as the food, we try to be, accommodate the cultural needs and the preferences of our participants. So once we have participants enrolled, we look to local restaurants and catering companies to accommodate both the dietary preferences and the health needs of the attending participants. So it can vary.
I see, thank you. Then, I'm just kind of curious, both geographically and from where they actually live, where do the clients come from?
Usually, these programs are very community-based. The clients are really, the program is really meant to serve the community and the participants in the neighborhoods in which they live. So we tend to limit the radius to the direct, within about a half-hour drive out. We do get requests for further out if the participants have really particularly liked that program, and so all of our vehicles are maintained to do those routes, so the participants can stay close to home as possible. So we are envisioning participants coming from within Costa Mesa and the surrounding cities.
I see, and so the participants live in, like, with their families, and this is, so this is a respite?
Yes, it is a respite program. They can live with their families. We do have participants who live in senior housing. Some do live in assisted living facilities, especially if those facilities don't really provide additional activities or programs, but the vast majority are in private homes.
So do the, so your vehicles go to each home and pick up the people?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's correct. Or if they prefer, we also have families and caregivers who do the drop-off and pickup, and the participant preference is really at the core of that decision.
I see. You know, I think that's, those were the questions I had. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Toler?
I don't have any questions, but thank you for your presentation, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right, I've got a couple of questions, and you addressed the question of the recreational activities, so thank you about that. There's an indication in the staff report that is part of the personal care. You also conduct interventions? Could you speak to that?
Sure, so we develop plans of care for all of our participants. We do have professional staff, such as nurses and social workers, but they don't go to the extent of full medical procedures. So when we say personal care and interventions, because the program is designed to help maintain participants, to stay as independent as possible and live within the community, it comes down to education, monitoring. For example, if we have a participant who has a diagnosis of hypertension, for example, we'll do the daily blood pressure monitoring, queuing, and working with the participant and their families to make sure their medication is stable and being well-maintained. And we'll also liaise with the primary care physician, and let them know if there's any symptoms that we're seeing. So it really is based on a long-term goal of maintaining, so that we don't get massive fluctuations or drastic changes in condition that would necessitate higher levels of care, like going to an acute care hospital or going into a skilled nursing facility.
And so that explanation you gave, that's, that's what you mean by interventions?
That's correct, yes. So monitoring and education primarily.
Okay. One question about the facility, and then I've got a couple of the questions. It appears as if you're planning on constructing restroom facilities that will be accessible within your facility. Am I reading that plan correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
By the state, the regulation, we have to provide certain numbers of the urinals and water classes to the participant numbers.
Okay. So I'm not familiar with this kind of facility, so maybe you can help me with these next couple of questions. They're not judgmental questions, they're really trying to just inform myself.
Sure.
So is your business a for-profit or a nonprofit business?
Our organization is a for-profit organization.
Okay, and the participants, are they generally paying for these services from insurance, from state funding, or personal savings?
Sure, it's a mixture. The majority are either through Medi-Cal or through private insurance.
Got it, okay, thank you. That's all my questions. Opened up for public comment. Any members of the public would like to come up and speak, and if you'll have a seat, and we'll call you back up in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm also very familiar with this. I had a mother with a 20-year, very serious chronic illness, and I drove every day to Huntington Beach and back because there was nothing in the Costa Mesa area. So I think location-wise, it's great. My question is, I was questioning about the insurance and private pay, but they answered that. But I also like a breakdown on the actual staff. Like, if they have a maximum of 270 people of that staff, I mean, you're going to have some that are administrative or secretarial or whatnot. So what is the actual number of staff that would be utilized for, say, the maximum of 270 people? And I'd also like them to consider that for people that are working, they're desperate, like for childcare, to have an extension. If you could start it earlier and do it till someone could actually maintain a job, and have a place, say, for their parent, for their loved one that needed this care, that that service is really needed, so that the individual that's a caregiver, as was in my choice, I needed full-time care. So I had to have people to pick up and deliver her on both ends, because we were in a different city. So, you know, I worked 15 hours a day, and then took care of her during the time I wasn't there. So to have a full-time program that would allow a family member to work, that would be wonderful, especially in our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. See anyone else? Anyone on Zoom or the phone?
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, Mr. Gomez or Ms. Lee, any comments or maybe a response to the question about staff?
Sure, yes. I'd like to thank you for your questions. They're very helpful for our sake, as well as we continue to plan out our operation and tailor it to Costa Mesa, the needs of the Costa Mesa residents. As to the first question with the staff ratios, the vast majority of the 40, prospective 40 staff members are to be direct service and direct care staff. We also have state requirements under our state regulatory agencies for staffing ratios, based on the number of total participants, and so we adhere very, very closely and do tend to overstaff in order to make, to make sure that the participants are fully well-cared for. As to the second question with the extended hours, that's also something that we are considering, hence us having a longer operation time than the actual program time. So that we do have staff on-site to help care for participants who do need those extended hours in programming, but we do want to make sure we balance that with the acuity levels and the endurance of a lot of our participants. A lot of the older adults we serve do have a difficult time being out from and engaging in programs for an extended period of time. So this is definitely a part of our plan of care, and working closely with the families and the participants to make sure that the program that they have matches their needs and abilities.
Thank you. You mentioned regulations a couple of times. What state agency is it that propagates those and oversees your operation?
Sure, it's the California Department of Public Health for our licensing requirements, and the California Department of Aging for our other certification requirements.
Thank you. Before you step away, any other questions from the commission?
Yes, sir, I do have one last question. So you mentioned earlier that you plan to do a lot of local hire, which I think is a great idea, but how do you plan to go about getting a local residence, maybe prospective college grads in their city to go into working at your facility? And what types of jobs are you looking to hire? Is it like nursing? How many nurses? How many different people? And what kinds of training would those individuals need to go to to get a job at your facility?
Sure. So luckily, we have a formula that works from our experience at our other Orange County facilities. We really work closely with our local care providers, such as our doctors, our hospitals, our other clinicians, and they have great referrals for nurses. We work with the local colleges as well with the nursing programs, and we try to bring in interns and have them eventually gain employment in our programs. We also work with local universities and colleges for social work programs, which is another key component of our hiring. And then, again, we really find that some of our best candidates just come from the community because they've had interaction with the programs and know, and because we really do value staff who come to the program because they want to serve the community, because they want to serve this population. And those are the staff who really retain the training and stay for a long time. So we plan to continue to interact with local businesses and local education programs for hiring. And then if all else fails, there is the traditional health wanted and the Craigslist of the world, but luckily, we haven't had to do too much of that in our past.
All right, great. Well, thank you so much for that. I think local hire is important when possible, and that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Erith? No? Okay, thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any further questions? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's good, that's okay. I just had a quick question. Do all of the clients come every day, seven days a week, or do either the 100, 270, or is that the, all of the people for the week, and they don't all come every day? How does that work?
Right, so the total capacity per day is 270, but most participants don't come every day of the week. They can come as little as twice a week, or as much as five times a week, and so the, our program is catered so that we have some flexibility in scheduling based on what the participant needs are. Some participants are still very active and have other engagements and other programs to go on other days of the week, and so it really does fluctuate how many participants will be there daily, but it is up to 270 per day. We do expect that on weekends, for example, the attendance will be much, much lower, and mostly for extenuating circumstances.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell. All right, any questions for staff? Commissioner Vivar, any questions for staff?
No.
All right. We'll close the public hearing, and ask the commissioners if we have a motion. Commissioner Erith?
Thank you Chair. Per planning application 22-09, I recommend that we find the project categorically exempt from the provisions of California Environmental Quality Act SEQA, per SEQA Guidelines, Section 15301, existing facilities, and approve planning application 22-09, subject to the conditions of approval.
All right, and that motion is seconded by Commissioner Russell, and would you like to speak to that? Commissioner Erith?
Briefly, thank you Chair. I will, I think, just briefly highlight Ms. Spadoni's comment earlier in saying that I too took care of my elderly grandmother through college, and I know what it's like to have to come back and forth, because I went to college in San Diego, and I would have to come back during weekends to relieve my family for the weekday, right? And I'm sure it's a common story that the applicant hears from folks, which is probably one of the reasons why they want to one of the reasons why they want to open up here in Costa Mesa. I'm, I'm thrilled at this idea of La Palma coming here, and I think that's about it for me. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Russell, would you like to speak to your second?
Sure. I, my grandparents lived with us when I was a teenager, and part of what I did was come and check, come back from school and, and make sure they were okay. My, my dad had dementia, and my mom kept, took care of him for years, and it took a toll on her. And I'm really happy to see that this is coming to Costa Mesa. I mean, you heard the statistics. The population is getting older. We need to have these kinds of facilities. This is, looks, I walked around the facility, and it looks like a really good place in terms of egress, egress and ingress, and the way it's going to be set up, I think it's going to work really well. So welcome to Costa Mesa. I hope it goes well.
Thank you. Commissioner Toler?
Yeah, I don't really have any comments. I would ask, I think it's a, it's good to see that, that beautiful building. That's like one of, if you ask people, if you ask people in Costa Mesa, what's the most beautiful building in Costa Mesa? I'll bet you get that building more than half the time, easy. It's a shame that it's perpetually vacant, so I'm glad to see a good use moving in. It's going to be filled with life and activity. I would ask staff to maybe look at that sign that I saw in the existing conditions photos. I think that's been out there for at least five years. And I don't know if that's in line with the, I don't know, code enforcement might need to take a look at that. But besides that, I'm obviously in favor of the motion. Thank you, guys, again.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, sir, thank you. I too am in favor of the motion, and I think it's great that we're going to have this kind of facility and service offered in the city. And frankly, I'm surprised that we don't have that already in the city or more services like it. So I'm glad that you chose Costa Mesa for your services and I'm, to offer your services, and I'm sure that you're going to build a great partnerships with the local small business community, with colleges and others, community members. So again, thank you for choosing Costa Mesa, and I'm looking forward to seeing your use, your facility open and in full swing. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's it for me.
Thank you, sir. I'll be supporting the motion. I'm enthusiastically supporting the motion. Your, your, your passion is, is clear, and that generally translates into well-run businesses. I was researching the percentages of elderly in our community for a completely different purpose, and the statistic you cited was right in line with what I had found. But not surprisingly, that's not an unusual percentage. That's a common percentage throughout almost all the cities in Orange County, California, even across the nation. So you're serving an important part of our population, and I hope there are more businesses like yours doing the same thing in other communities. So thank you and welcome to the city. Anna roll call vote, please.
That motion carries 5-0 with Chair DiRico and Commissioner Rojas absent.
Thank you very much. That decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Thank you and good luck to you. Anna, public hearing, item number three. Could you read that into the record?
Public hearing, item number three, Planning Application 22-26 for a conditional use permit to operate an indoor ax throwing facility with sale of alcoholic beverages at 1941 Newport Boulevard. Please note, we have not received public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Russell?
Yes, I had a conversation with some of the neighbors that live behind the property.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Toler? Commissioner Erth?
I too had a discussion with about two or three neighbors behind the subject property.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Vivar?
No, sir, I don't have anything to report.
All right. I didn't communicate with any members of the public, but I did do some internet research on businesses similar to yours. So let's see. Mr. Drapkin, would you like to make an introduction for us?
I would. Thank you. This is a new face for the commission. It's Jeffrey Romondo. He's one of our new assistant planners. We stole another good one. This one's from Monterey Park. So Jeffrey's been with the city for just coming up to a year, and he's been working on a lot of zoning administrator projects and a lot of other priorities that we have outside of planning commission. And now he's getting his feet wet with some planning commission, and we'll be giving him a lot more, and you'll be seeing his smiling face more as we go on. So with that, Jeffrey Romondo, our newest addition.
Welcome. Thank you. The floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Scott, for the kind introduction. All right. So good evening, commissioners. The item before you tonight is Planning Application 22-26, which is for a conditional use permit for an indoor ax throwing facility with sale of alcoholic beverages proposed at 1941 Newport Boulevard. And the business name is called Slasher's Axe Throwing the Nails, and as part of the proposal, a Type 40 ABC license will be involved for the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption. As indicated, the proposed facility is located at 1941 Newport Boulevard, which is approximately a block north from the end of the southbound 55 freeway. The subject property is Zone C2, which is the general business district. The existing property development currently consists of a vacant two-unit commercial building with the applicant looking to occupy one of the vacant tenant spaces. As shown on the zoning map, the property is surrounded by commercial properties to the north and south, as well as residential to the rear. Just for reference, here are a few photos of the site with a view of the storefront. The proposed ax throwing facility will be looking to occupy the tenant space, which you may see the entry door on the last photo to the right, which is around over here. And the space adjacent to the proposed facility was previously occupied by the retail store Shoe City and is currently vacant. And here are the site and floor plans of the proposal. As you can see on the site plan, the site currently consists of 34 parking spaces. The facility will look to occupy the larger tenant amongst the two, with the smaller tenants remain vacant. The facility will have 19 ax throwing lanes, as well as a bar area, and fencing will be provided to delineate and divide each designated lane. There's also ancillary storage rooms and restrooms in the main entrance lobby that will be accessed from the rear of the building. The business will be, will be reservation-based through the business sites software system as participants are allowed to reserve between one to two-hour game sessions. And as conditioned, the bar services will be restricted to patrons of a reserved or active game session. Now, due to pro, close proximity with the residential neighborhood to the rear, the applicant has provided noise mitigations, such as installing specialized rubber mats in each throwing lane and utilizing softer end-grain wood used for targets to reduce noise impacts caused by the axes thrown. Also, parking lots will be posted to prevent lagering and noise. In addition, employees working in the lobby area will be responsible for checking the parking lot area to ensure there will be no lagering or excessive noise. And if noise is determined to be disruptive for the adjacent tenants, a condition has been implemented that a parking lot monitor may be required if that were the case. When it comes to parking, since a parking requirement was not identified in the city's parking ordinance, a parking study was prepared by the consultant RK Engineering Group. The study entailed examines an existing ax throwing facility in the neighboring city of Huntington Beach called Stumpy's Hatchet House. And through the analysis, it was observed that the overall peak parking demand resulted in a parking rate of four spaces per 1,000 square feet of gross floor area. As seen in the table provided below, when applying the observed parking rate to the proposed ax throwing facility while also taking the adjacent vacant retail space into account, the overall parking demand for the site will result in a surplus of three parking spaces. Therefore, it has been determined that the proposed use would not result in an impact to parking. As said earlier in the presentation, there are certain conditions I've referenced so that pertain to addressing potential noise concerns highlighted by the last three bullet points. It is understood that the applicant, as part of the proposal, has requested to operate daily from 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM. Now, staff is in the belief that this request is problematic due to the existing adjacent residential, residential properties would potentially be impacted by customers arriving and leaving during late hours. So staff has recommended to include condition of approval number three to limit the hours of operation to end at 11:00 PM rather than 1:00 AM. With that said, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from SEQA and to approve Planning Application 22-26, subject to conditions of approval. Now, this concludes my presentation. Also, the applicant's representative, Dave C., and the applicant, Madison Rose, is also in attendance to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Romondo. We will start with questions of staff. Commissioner, Commissioner Toler, can we start with you?
Sure. Thank you for your presentation. Nice to meet you. Parking, real quick, so they're taking up a portion of the facility. I just want to make sure that someone else isn't squeezed out of the vacant spaces so this doesn't preclude another retail use from moving in. It's not going to tip things over so that nobody else can, can move into the vacant space.
Yeah, through the, through the parking study, it examined that for the vacant space adjacent to it, any retail use or any uses that are in the same parking ratio would be allowed to move in there.
Yeah. Okay. Second question is about signage. I see the little graphics in the plans that we have, but it also says new window signage, and I think two of those windows facing Newport Boulevard. Do we know what that's proposed to look like? What's going to be facing the street or what, how that might evolve over time once it's out of our hands?
So in this situation, signage will come under a separate permit. It'll, it's an administrative approval or review if it complies with the code.
Yeah.
So it may, I, I don't know what the applicant will post with regards to window signage, but if it does, we'll refer it for, review it for compliance.
So I, I don't know the signage, the sign code as much as I probably should. The reason I'm asking is because this, I mean, the, the theme is, you know, the theme is kind of horrific. It's grotesque a little bit, right? So I'm just wondering, you know, I'm wondering if it's, if in a few months, I'm going to walk or drive by there and there's going to be some imagery, you know, that's exposed to everybody to see that might be, like, you know, some might find offensive or disturbing. You understand what I'm-
I do completely understand, and I'll keep my eyes on that and also beware and cognizant of that when I'm reviewing the signage as well.
Okay. And maybe I'll ask the applicant when they come up. That, that's, those are my questions for now.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Russell?
Yeah, this may be a question that most, that's more appropriate for the, the applicant. In talking to the local residents, they had a couple of concerns. Some of them were related more to the motel and, and people jumping over their, their fences and the lights in the alley. But they did have a concern, and, and I went back last night to look at it. The lights in the parking lot of this, of this property go right into their windows. And do we have a lighting plan from them yet? And what are we expecting from them?
No, we didn't receive a lighting plan as part of the, the application.
Okay. How, what's that, what's that process going to be like?
I believe we have a lighting condition, if I'm not mistaken, and if we don't, I can add one.
There, there is one, but it's, it's just, it says they're-
Doesn't, won't spill over, I think.
Yeah, they won't spill, and I'm not sure, you know, what that really is going to mean in terms of where these folks light.
So basically, no light spillage, I believe, was the condition. And we'll just assure that it won't have any light spillage. If it, if it does, we'll have it on some type of a control.
Okay. That was, that was their main concern, so it's-
No problem.
-one of my concerns. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, sir. Just want to follow up on Commissioner Russell's question on, on the light spillage. So I didn't, I didn't get an opportunity to see the site at night, but i, if in fact the light does currently shine directly into people's windows, would, would they be, would the operators of the facility be obligated to change that and not just simply leave the lights as they, as they are, submit a plan for whatever those lights are?
Yes, Commissioner Vivar, this is an opportunity to where staff and the city can control light spillage.
Okay. Regarding the, the foliage that's being proposed at the, the planners, so the main purpose of that is to serve as a noise barrier? Is that, am I understanding that correctly? And are there any, and if, and if that is correct, what are the, I don't know, particular aspects of the foliage thickness or cover types of plants that we're looking for to make sure that they are kind of buffering maybe some of the noise coming from people on the site?
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Currently, along the residential areas in the motel, there's a six-foot concrete brick wall. There is no landscaping being proposed in that area. It is possible that we, that the city could require landscaping as part of a condition. Landscaping, and many times a hit or miss with regards to reduction of noise. It's a hit when it comes to reduction in light, though, for sure. But for, as the applications be proposed right now, it's an existing parking lot scenario with no landscaping. It's, it's, it does not have any landscaping along that wall that is along the back property line.
I thought I remembered reading something about planners and the staff report or some kind of like, yeah, I don't know. Maybe, maybe I misread that. I don't remember. Regarding the potential for noise, I, I appreciate staff's concern regarding, regarding any potential noise spillover into the neighboring residential areas and thus limiting the hours of operation from 1:00 PM, 1:00 AM ending time to 11:00 PM. 11:00 PM is still a bit late, so I, I, I would be concerned if people were still getting, you know, noise at 10:00 or 10:30. So is there, is there something that we look for in terms of quantifying a noise impact for residential areas? So would, would the residential areas have to hear zero noise coming from the, from the facility? And how would we measure that in terms of decibels or nuisance if, if noise became a concern? Like, at which point are residents able to, I don't know, complain to the city and maybe call up the CUP for, for review?
So the city does have a noise ordinance, and we do regulate it based on the location of where the, where the noise is being heard from the property. With regards to noise, we, we have a, the code enforcement division will go out and review noise complaints and certain, certain times when the noise occurs or regularly occurs. In this situation, this property is a commercial property, and it's located on one of the city's commercials corridor. And one of the city's municipal code regulations is to allow a use to occur up to 11:00 PM without a conditional use permit. So it, the code more or less signals that 11:00 PM is a reasonable hour for a commercial facility to operate. Anytime afterwards, it requires- Anytime afterwards, it requires the planning commission's discretion. That is not to take away the planning commission's decision over regulating the time. I'm not inferring that. I just wanted to indicate that more or less, the code does signal 11:00 p.m. as a reasonable time and even goes as far as to give staff the discretion to approve that.
Okay. Yeah, that makes sense. All right. Well, I think the next question is also about noise, but maybe more aptly responded by the applicant. So, that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Drapkin.
Thank you. Commissioner Earth?
Thank you, Chair. And I'll start off by saying, Mr. Ramondo, welcome aboard. I, I think our success rate for poaching talent is going way off the charts right now, and I'm really glad you're on board. So, welcome. I will start off by just, I think, revisiting what Commissioner Russell had highlighted earlier in terms of light spill. I, I found it on page 18 under Exhibit B, conditions of approval. All exterior lighting shall be shielded and/or directed away from residential areas, and no light spill shall occur off-site. So, I'm not sure if a lighting plan follows if required, but I just assume that it will from our discussion. Is that correct? If a light, if a light study is required?
So, typically, we will require a light study and as part of a condition. In this situation, I think that it's, the study, it could be appropriate if the commission decided it was necessary. However, with this condition, it basically says none.
Okay.
So, if an applicant or a property owner or a resident, I should say not an applicant, but a resident, were to complain about light, I would, staff would get involved.
Okay. And under the way it's currently written, the administrator would have the discretion to enforce a light study if required?
Certainly could be something that we could do. It doesn't specify it specifically. We could add that condition.
Okay.
Even without it added, we could still do that.
You could still do it.
If, if we didn't find that, we would be able to make a determination otherwise.
Okay. If it's not redundant and you have the ability to enforce a light study regardless, then...
So, I, I don't think it would be redundant, but if the commission desired to put that in there as a catch-all with, if the, if the city cannot determine if there's a light problem, a light study will be required. I certainly think that we could add that in there.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next question. I, I wish I could have asked you this earlier. Until when was the previous business allowed to operate, and what were their parking demand characteristics for the site? You know, a shoe store open until late? I think, I don't think that shoe store was open that late.
I, I actually thought about that, and I didn't get that information, unfortunately. My assumption would be no later than 9:00 p.m., though.
At 9:00 p.m. Okay. All right. And if we turn to conditions of approval, page 17, number 11, regarding alcohol sales. Let's return to this. Number 11, it reads, "Sale of alcohol shall be limited to patrons with a reserved or active game session." So, to my understanding, there is no loitering at the bar without a reservation for a game? I'm just trying to restating what it says there, but just for clarification purposes.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. So, no one can just walk in and hang out at the bar just hoping to throw an ax?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Okay. And then also, if we go to the next page, page 18, number 25, it reads, "The use shall be conducted at all times in a manner which will allow the quiet enjoyment of the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant and/or business owner shall institute appropriate security and operational measures," shall institute appropriate security and operational measures that are necessary to comply with this requirement. So, just for public knowledge, can we just go through a few of what those would be? Operational, operational and security measures if, if required?
So, to start off with, if, if there was, one of the conditions that are also included in the resolution is that the applicant monitor the parking lot, basically one of the hosts or the other staff, to make sure that the people are leaving the parking lot or at least when they're in the parking lot, they're not making excessive noise. Obviously, there's conditions 23 through 27, which kind of monitor parking, which includes signage to tell people to basically mind the neighbors and also no outdoor seating out there, so everything is under roof. And, and some other requirements that generally kind of catch-all. If, if it does happen, we can monitor it and make changes.
Okay. Perfect. All right. Mr. Ramondo, Mr. Drapkin, thank you very much. Chair Zick, thank you. That's all for me.
Thank you very much. So, I've got a few questions. Let me start. If I may, let me start with a couple of questions I have for the city attorney and kind of get my, my legal hat on and off. So, there is a indication that the applicant's operating rules will require that anyone 10 years or older not only must be accompanied by a guardian, but must have a guardian sign a waiver. In fact, every participant has to sign this waiver. My question for the city attorney is, number one, have you seen the waiver? And number two, would there be any reason for you to see the waiver?
Thank you, Vice Chair Dick. No, Zick, no, I have not seen the waiver, and no, it would not be appropriate for the city to provide legal advice to the applicant.
Okay. Thank you. And then, my next question, we've got on page 17, the condition of approval number 15, and also on page 19, conditions of approval, or condition of approval number 35. My question goes to this. So, when I first saw the application, ax throwing and alcohol, I, I conjure up some images, and I wondered about the extent of the city's liability should, should anything bad happen to a participant. And it looks like the condition of approval number 15 is pretty much the belt and suspenders' language that says, "Under no circumstances is the city responsible for anything," and that the applicant is to hold the city harmless. Is this the language, what can, let me say it this way, would I rely on this language to be comfortable that the applicant is 100% responsible for this, for the consequences of their business operation and not the city should we approve the application? If that makes sense, that question?
Thank you, Vice Chair Zick. I'm looking at condition of approval number 17 on my copy of the conditions of approval. But nonetheless, this language would require both the, or would require the applicant, the property owner, and the operator, if they are, if they are separate entities or persons, to jointly and severally defend and indemnify the city. That's mean they would, that means they would each, each of them would be jointly responsible, defend and indemnify the city if the city was ever sued or there's a lawsuit or a claim filed against the city.
Got it. And the idea of the condition on my staff report, condition of approval number 35 refers to a liability insurance policy, $2 million. This would be our way of insuring, ensuring that the applicant has the adequate resources by virtue of their insurance to, to, to protect against a, an injury lawsuit. Is that correct?
Thank you, Commissioner Zick. Again, this, this condition requiring $2 million of insurance, which is not the limit of the indemnitor's liability, that is, that is the intent of that condition. However, for some reason, on my copy of the conditions of approval, I do not see that condition listed. I have condition 17, which we discussed, the requirement to defend and indemnify the city, but I do not actually see the insurance requirement, although I know it should be in there. Perhaps Mr. Drapkin can point it out to me? Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Chair Zick, there's a slight discrepancy in what was in my packet with what appears to be on the official record. So, what appears to be on the official record is condition approval 17, 15, which is the defense and indemnity obligation that I referred to as 17. And then here, Director Drapkin just handed me commission, condition of approval 35, which is the $2 million insurance requirement.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. My other questions. We have nothing, or I don't see anything in the conditions of approval that limits the ages of people entering the facility. So, to be clear, anybody of any age is allowed to enter the facility. We have no restriction on that, correct?
We do have no limitations.
Okay. I appreciate the condition of approval number eight, requiring that the tenants' space operate with its doors closed. I think that's something that we're starting to appreciate is, is important to the neighborhood. So, with regard to this waiver that every participant must sign and guardians of anyone under the age of 18 and over the age of 10, I don't see that as a condition of approval. So, from our standpoint, do we care whether they have people sign waivers or not sign
It's not something that staff conditioned or got ahead of, so to speak. It could be a condition if the planning commission feels necessary and the city attorney doesn't disagree with maybe an overreach possible.
Okay. Just for clarification, then, the city attorney, would we care whether they actually use waivers or not waivers?
Well, the use of a waiver would be solely for the benefit of the applicant. It would not be benefit of, it would not be to the benefit of the members of the public who use the, use the facility. It would deny the members the benefit of the public depending on how the, the waiver was read from CEQA redress should they get injured on the premises. So, from my, from my perspective, the planning commission, this is, that's simply a private agreement between the operator or the landlord and the participants.
Okay. Thank you for that. So, I had a question about condition of approval number 21. I did not understand this. It's on page 18 of the staff report. It says, "The hours of operation for customer service shall not occur between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m." Now, the next condition of approval says truck deliveries can't occur between 8:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. the following morning. So, what is this customer service condition that we restrict?
So, that did spark my interest as well, Vice Chair Zick. And the, the reason it's written that way is because that's the way the code reads it. Normally, a provision like that would be a permissive code, not a code that specifies when it can't occur. It would mostly say when it can occur. And in this situation, the customer, under that provision about the, the provisions for when a operation can be administratively approved up to 11:00 p.m., the code says it cannot happen between 11:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m. instead of saying between 6:00 and 11:00 p.m. So, that's, and that's basically oriented towards customer service, whereas the truck deliveries is, is, goes beyond that, and it's oriented towards just deliveries, obviously. And it's from 8:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. It cannot occur between that time, so it has to occur outside of that time.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Condition of approval number five says, "A customer shall exit the facility immediately following the end of their game session." Shall exit the facility immediately following the end of their game session. Each game session shall provide for a 15-minute gap between each session to allow participants adequate time to vacate the facility and the parking lot before the next game begins. Now, I just want to be clear, the reason you're doing that is to ensure that there's adequate parking, correct?
That is correct, Commissioner Zick. And when we wrote this condition, it was written prior to the study. So, we had gotten ahead on this project and looked over some conditions that might make the project approvable. After the study was completed and it reviewed another site that has obviously comparable parking demand, if this, this condition is a little less necessary than what we thought and what we believed with the amount of ax-throwing lanes that there, that they requested. So, basically, where we're at is, this, this kind of was a leftover. We could, staff could easily pivot on that one because we do believe that parking is, is adequate. And if there was a situation where an ax-throwing lane, the customers decided that they wanted to move up to the bar, I think that would be perfectly acceptable. However, I do encourage the commission to not change the condition that says that the bar can only be used by customers of the ax-throwing premise. So, if, as long as that condition is withheld, staff would be perfectly fine with pivoting on that condition to allow them not to leave because, like you said, it was based specifically on the parking demand.
Okay. Thank you. I may return to this connection between those issues. On the diagram, I have two questions. So, I'm looking at the lanes and particularly the lanes that have targets that abut the vacant suite in the building. And my question about that is, again, I can't help but think that that might be problematic to whoever eventually leases that space. But from our standpoint, do we care about that issue, or will that be completely an issue that the building owner will have to contend with?
The latter.
Thank you. And then, the, I guess I have two more questions on this diagram. The block wall at the north end of, maybe it's not north, oh, it is, north end of the parking lot, how tall is that block wall?
Yeah, on the north end, it's six foot high.
And what is the maximum height our code would allow that wall to be without any special deviation of permission?
Off the top of my head, I do not know the limit to that wall. Typically, walls are, are maximum six foot high. I could take a moment and see if I could find that in the code, though.
I'm just curious from the standpoint of noise impact and whether a taller wall would have a, a benefit for that. And my last question about this diagram has to do with the restrooms. So, it appears as if there's two restrooms that are accessible within the facility and a third restroom that is accessible only from the parking lot or from the outside. I don't understand that.
Could you repeat that question? I'm sorry.
There are two restrooms which are accessible from within the building, and then there's a third restroom which is only accessible from the exterior of the building, and I don't understand that.
Maybe that's a better question for the applicant as well.
Okay. I would think they're, okay, so then from a... Okay. I would think they're, okay, so then from a code standpoint, maybe this is getting ahead of where we are in the process, would you happen to know what the code requirement is for this operation from a plumbing code standpoint?
I would have to speak with the building official about that, and that would be handled during structural.
Okay. Okay. That's it for my questions. Any other questions for staff before we bring up the applicant? Okay. So I'll open the public hearing and ask whether the applicant or their representative is present. And sir, if you could state your name and let me know if you have read the staff report and the conditions of approval, and if you agree with all of them.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dave C., and I'm here tonight representing the applicant and business owners who are also attending, Madison, Luke Rhodes. And just to start off, yes, we have read the staff report, the resolution, and all the attachments, and we are in agreement with all of those documents, including the conditions of approval. So what I'll do is go ahead and just briefly summarize the project. Thank you, staff, for a great presentation. We believe they covered everything that was needed, and I don't need to repeat that. But, and I did take notes, so I'll try my best to answer all the planning commission's questions, although I may exceed three minutes, if that's okay.
Please, take your time.
Okay. Thank you. And then after I'm finished here, too, if you do get questions from the community of the neighbors, I'd be happy to come back and respond to those to the best my ability.
I'll give you that opportunity.
And I'll just be speaking tonight, but if there are very specific operational questions, the owners can certainly come forward and answer those. So just kind of summarizing before I get to the questions, we're in agreement with everything that staff presented. We believe this is a very suitable use along a commercial corridor like this. We are very sensitive to the fact that there are residential properties behind, and we believe those have been addressed, both operationally from our point of view, and with staff's conditions of approval, which are very extensive, but we're in agreement with. But we think it's a very appropriate use here. It is a commercial zone. So anything that goes here is going to have at least a minimal impact on residents. You know, like if there's a restaurant here, people will leave, and they'll go to their cars and start and leave. It's really not going to be any different than that. The recreational activity will be inside entirely with the doors closed. The residents won't hear anything. They will just hear people exiting, going in the parking lot, starting their cars and leaving. It's really that simple. So because of that, we believe that this is a good use for this site, and we hope the planning commission agrees with that. So what I'll do is kind of go through the questions here. Hopefully, I can answer them appropriately. As far as signage goes, we did not propose signage, because it is a code requirement, and we intend on complying with the signage code, and will work with staff should the planning commission approve this entitlement. We heard your points of view, your concerns about the appropriateness of the signage, you know, facing outside. Maybe inside, it might be more slasher-oriented, but we will try to be as tasteful as possible. Maybe nothing worse than something you would see during Halloween or something. So we will try to be tasteful as much as possible. Thank you for that comment, though. As far as lighting goes, if lights do shine down, and it sounds like it does, on adjacent properties, certainly we will, we will address that. We believe lighting is very easy to mitigate. I've dealt with this many times, and that's always a sensitive issue with, with neighbors, as it should be. But it can be simply addressed with certain light heads, and then like a sheet metal shielding that one hundred percent directs it away from the residential property. So we believe that's very easy to address. It is a condition of approval, and we certainly will adhere to that and work closely with staff. And before getting a CFO and a business license, planning staff will have to go out and inspect the site. They will make sure the shielding's on there before signing anything off. So we're happy to comply with that and make an existing situation better. As far, there was a comment about landscaping. We are not proposing landscaping along the north end where the block wall is, primarily because if we did it, we would lose parking spaces. And I don't, I would think nobody would want to lose parking if we put a planer back there or reduce the size of the parking spaces. We do believe the block wall will shield noise extensively, but as far as noise goes, we believe it really can be addressed best operationally. To make sure customers leave, don't loiter in the parking lot and just go, and don't visit in the back. The owners can certainly monitor that. They can enforce that. So we don't believe there'd be any impact on noise, because it would be contained within the building. And landscaping, that was brought up as a noise buffer that really doesn't, that actually doesn't work. Even if shrubs were put back there, shrubs do not shield noise. It just, visually, it provides a shield. But I've read many studies and dealt with this before, and landscaping does not reduce noise at all. But, but the block wall certainly is very effective shielding noise. Let's see. Just to comment on the noise standard, I don't know in the code, but a typical noise standard is sixty decibels at property line. Almost all cities I deal with have that standard. I'm not aware of any no-noise standard. Just, it's reasonable to have at least a certain decibel level, but we can certainly comply with that if it is sixty decibels, I believe it is, and certainly staff hopefully can verify that. But I just wanted to make that point regarding noise. You, there was a comment on condition number eleven, alcohol for customers only, and we are in agreement with that. That is part of the owner's intention and plan is to only serve customers. This is not a bar. It's not meant to, to attract customers that would come in and just drink and leave. That, that's not how they want to operate. Condition number twenty-five, there was a discussion on that, and we are in agreement with that also, in that we believe noise can be best mitigated operationally. Certainly, we can, you know, like I said, mitigate with lights and so on. But as far as noise goes, it's just making sure customers leave, don't loiter outside, there's no activities going on outside. So we're in agreement with that condition, number twenty-five. And there was a comment on the restroom, which is accessible from the outside. We kind of chuckle about that, because when we went to the site, I went there several times with the owners, and we walked the site. It's, it's nothing more than existing. It's just, let's, for whatever reason, the previous tenant, Shoe City, had a, or there was another business there. I can't recall what was there, but that was installed previously. That's not proposed, that restroom accessible just from the parking lot. So we really had no intention to change that, and there's no other reason than that, is just keep it the way it is. And then if the commission were to delete condition number five, not requiring the fifteen-minute gap between sessions, we would be in agreement with that. But should you want to keep it, that's fine. We wouldn't want to make that an issue. And with that, available for questions. And thank you for your time, commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. C. Commissioner Erith, questions?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your, your presentation. Really appreciate it, especially answering a couple of my related questions and the conditions of approval. To start out, do you have a record on hand of any ax-related injuries that have taken place along, in this line of business, particularly with this company?
So when you say this company, this is actually their first opening up ax-throwing facility. They do operate another business, a recreational business, but not ax-throwing. But based on our research, no. We, the owners have been to numerous places and really paid attention to how it operates. I personally went to the one in Huntington Beach. I met them there. I really got a feel for what happened there, how it was operated. And by the way, they're not really axes, they're more hatchets. They're called axes, but they're pretty short, like this. You know, an axe is probably four feet long. So they are very small, and they can just be thrown with one hand. So they, you know, it's, and it's not dangerous, because it's within enclosed stalls. I don't want to say cages, but they're really stalls. So if the hatchet doesn't stick and bounces, it'll land on a rubber mat quietly, and the customer is way too far to get hit by it. So it is surprisingly safe, and we're not aware of any incidents of injury. And I did confirm this. I know the Huntington Beach staff. I did talk to them. They said they've had no problems at Stumpy's, both with alcohol and accident incidents. So to our knowledge, no.
Okay. And I think maybe one of the reasons why I asked this is, you know, having something as unique as this item, you know, comes to us, I get on YouTube and I start going down the rabbit hole, right? And I start seeing all kinds of things. So I'm just kind of curious about the level of safety that you imagine, and the safety measures that are built into operations there, because from what I observed, at least in some cases, not all, that there is bounce back of the hatchets, and, you know, things do happen. So I'm just kind of wondering if you have anything internally that you're going to do beyond what's in here for what's proposed, to make sure that safety remains an extremely high priority here?
So we believe we covered everything. We were very thorough in our written letters to the planning commission, a very thorough safety plan, done a lot of research on this. It's really a matter of just following the rules, and the employees carefully watching and monitoring and training the customers. Yeah. So if it's okay with the commission, the owner, Madison, would like to speak to that.
Okay. Hi, Madison. Thanks for coming up.
Hi. Thanks. Yeah. So my husband and I, we've been to a ton of ax-throwing places. And the biggest reason why we want to open our own is because we feel everyone is doing it really poorly and dangerously. So we look at everything that we like, and especially things that we don't like. So a couple of things that people are doing that we think is terrible is, first of all, they're using axes that have rubber handles. So that automatically just gives an extra bounce. If for some reason that handle was to hit the target instead of the head of the axe, it's going to come back at you. So a proper throwing axe actually has a wooden handle. The other thing is, there's these mats that hang around the target, and they hang, and they have about a one-foot distance of just empty space behind them. So if the axe was to be thrown and hit that mat, it would just drop straight to the floor. So it's not anything like hard behind there that gives it the ability to bounce. And then the biggest thing, too, is also having a mat on the floor, too, that also just takes the force out of the axe and just keeps it so it stays right there. So I've seen those same YouTube videos. I think it's a very easy thing to fix, and we're very aware of it. And we're going to make sure, this is very safe, because it's our business. We, we want to make sure it's as safe as it possibly can be.
Sure. And maybe just one more kind of follow-up question here. If I'm not mistaken, there was some discussion in the application about rubberized mats, I believe, on the ground. Would that also create an additional opportunity for bounce back as well, since it's essentially just reflecting the energy back up?
The difference with that is, it is a rubber mat, but it's more like a yoga mat. So it's really squishy. So it does really take a lot of that impact away. And then also, when you're throwing the axe, you're throwing it towards the target. So it's going to take that impact if you just like really messed up your throw. And it's still going to deflate its energy and then push it towards that mat that's just going to drop it. So the rubber mats are very important to have on the floor versus having like a concrete floor that's just going to, you know, give it more force and bounce back.
Sure. Was, was there any discussion about using this kind of soft yoga rubberized mat versus something like wood chips?
Some places do wood chips. I personally don't like the wood chips, because they're very messy. I have gotten a splinter from using them. I think the rubber mats just overall look better. They're cleaner. They're easier to clean. I think they both solve the same problem, though.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. I do have a couple more questions, whoever wants to answer them. If we can turn to page number twenty-three, it is in, Mr. C., it's in your application letter for the conditional use permit application that you sent in, the multi-page letter. And if you go to the, the top of that second page that you sent in, there's a couple bullet points there that say three to five employees working at all times, positions of host bartender, and then quote camp counselors, that there's one employee for every six lanes, and that, that you'll have nineteen ax-throwing stalls or lanes with a maximum of three customers per lane, and I believe every employee presiding over six lanes. There is one additional lane if you add that up. So you have six, twelve, eighteen, and then that next one, nineteen. So would that, that nineteenth lane require you to have like a sixth employee in case all the lanes were, were taken at once? I assume that the times are going to be staggered, so not all of them will be used at the exact same time, or very rarely.
Yeah, correct. It is staggered. It's, the language is confusing. We've had this problem before with lanes and targets and booths. It's kind of what I like to talk about them. So you can kind of see that each picnic table is for a booth of people. So that will be for one group. So you'll have an ax-throwing person watch probably about two booths. So that can range between five to, to six lanes. So there will always be two, four, six, eight, yeah, for people watching. So they'll be able to watch eight booths. Does that make sense?
Sure. All right. Thank you. Next question, if we go to, let's see, condition of approval page, oh, you know what, I think that's it for my questions for now. Thank you very much, and thank you, Chair. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Vivar?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation, for answering a lot of the questions. I think Commissioner Erith asked some of the questions that I had. I am curious, though, are the booths slash lanes or stalls, or whatever you want to call them, are they, are they separated so that, say, somebody, if somebody's walking down to pick up their, their axe, that they don't accidentally get hit by somebody's really bad aim going from an adjacent lane to where they're getting to retrieve their axe?
Yeah. So this is actually something that we're doing that is unique to ax-throwing, which is really weird, that we are putting these chain link fences. They're about ten feet tall, and they go across the whole lane up to the throwing area. So that makes it so when you're throwing, you're in between this five-foot area of two chain link fences. So even if you do a really terrible throw, that is not going to go into anyone else's lane. There are places that for some reason do two targets in between two fences. So I don't know why they do it. It's kind of become like the industry standard. So this is an additional safety precaution that we are taking by adding that extra chain link fence in between targets, because I just think it's, it's the safer, more obvious thing to do.
Right. So I don't know what your ceiling height is, so that, does that ten-foot fence roughly go to the ceiling or almost?
The ceiling is sixteen feet tall. So it's going to go up ten feet, and then we'll have an additional chain link fence on the top of that. So it is completely enclosed.
Okay. Perfect. Yeah, that sounds like a really great measure to have. Regarding business operations, is this kind of going to be like a bowling alley where you have, you know, loud music going on, and sort of that sort of thing, that maybe people from the outside or the, say, the adjacent tenant's base, when and if it becomes occupied, and, you know, they kind of hear vibrations or like bass kind of sounds, or when people are exiting the place, that maybe somebody outside hears, you know, the ruckus or, you are exiting the place that maybe somebody outside hears, you know, the ruckus or, you know, music from inside. Do you guys plan to have that kind of thing going on, you know, lights and music and that sort of thing like you usually get at bowling alleys?
Music, yes. Lights, not so much. It's not much of like a dance party, I'll say. The atmosphere is very much more sport-oriented. So there will be like atmospheric music, definitely, just to get people a little bit more excited. But it's not party time music, if that makes sense.
So it's not like dance party bowling alley where you can't hear anybody unless you yell in their ear?
Right, no, no, it's not like that. That's not the vibe.
Okay. So from what I understand, from the conditions of, from the staff report and what I read and conditions of approval, people who are underage, so between 10 and 17 years of age can participate, but with a waiver. So I'm curious, can a bunch of high school friends come in and get a lane for themselves or would they not be allowed unless they had either A, an adult supervisor with them, playing with them or watching them, or B, had those waivers signed by a parent beforehand?
Yeah, as long as they have a signed waiver by a parent, they're welcome to participate. But if they're under the age of 14, we will require that there is an adult present. So ages, sorry, 15 to 17 could come as a group and play without adults being present as long as they did have a signed waiver. Or, you know, parents could drop them off and sign it there.
Okay. All right. Great answers. I think that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your answers. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Russell.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation and for your responses. I'm really glad to hear about the walls between the stalls and the cages because I was looking at that and thinking beer and axes might not be too good. Can you tell me about the training of your staff and what, what the requirements are or what their expertise has to be?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to teach them how to throw an ax properly, obviously. There is an organization called Waddell, which is the World Axe-Throwing League that we do hope to join. They also come with their own kind of guidelines as to how to train your staff properly. But the biggest thing is going to be able for them to know how to fix someone's throw. That's kind of more of a thing for the customers that have the best time is that really great moment that you have is when the ax sticks to the wall. So we really want to get it so every ax sticks. It's for the customers' enjoyment and for the own safety of the customer. If that ax is sticking, then there's no bounce-back going on. And honestly, the secret to that is how far away you're standing from the target. So an ax will make one full rotation to stick into the target. So if we see that someone's just constantly throwing it and say like the, the back of the ax is hitting, that means it's not quite making a full rotation. So the easiest thing to do is just keep that same form, whatever they're doing, and then just take a step back. And then just giving it that extra little distance for that ax to turn makes it so it hits the target. So that's going to be our main training is making it so they know how to throw the axes. And then obviously, basic safety training, going through the rules with every guest that they know, not just how to throw an ax, but how to treat an ax, where to pick it up and put it down between groups, don't hand off an ax to people, just obvious things that could become a safety concern.
And you mentioned an organization that you're thinking about connecting with. What are the requirements for joining that? What do you have to do?
I think you just have to pay them money.
Oh, so, okay.
So it's one of those things where they offer really great opportunities for tournaments. You can compete easily with other locations from around the world. That's why they're called the World Axe-Throwing League. So you can have your own tournament at your location. They can have one in London. And then those two teams could basically compete and you submit the scores. So we're still weighing the pros and cons of like what they have to offer versus what we want to do. Like, do we want to do more locally things? But they come with a lot of resources like axe-throwing training and things like that.
The other question I have is, I know that you're only going to be involved with, well, probably like three-quarters of the building. Now, the front, do you, what are your plans for the front of the building in terms of vegetation? And quite frankly, there's, and I think this is probably going to help just by having somebody in there, but there's a lot of trash and homeless people are there. And since your basic entry is going to be at the back, do you have any comments about what you're going to do to make sure that the front stays nice?
Yeah, the homelessness problem is a big concern of ours. And I do think having a business there will really help because of the hours that will be open, we can, you know, talk to them, send them resources, send them in a better direction than hanging out there. The majority of the front is occupied by the landlord. He is an owner of Shoe City. So I'm not too sure what he's going to do with the front, but I do know it's kind of gone downhill. There's no plants or anything like that. I actually went to school for set design, so I'm very focused on what things look like. So I've asked if I can be in charge of like what kind of flowers and stuff that we plant. And he's granted me that position. So it will look much better and we'll keep an eye on it because I know it is an issue and it's not one that I'm very happy about either.
Okay, thank you. I think between my colleagues and your presentation, all of my other questions were answered. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Toller.
Thank you, Vice President Zick. Thank you for answering my question about signage. You obviously understood exactly what I was trying to get at and I appreciate that. Obviously, this is a free speech thing. There's nothing the government could do, like, so that's all I really wanted. This is, serving beer and wine, I don't expect people to have a glass of wine while going out to do this sort of thing. But this is something I would never, I don't think it's the government's business, but in most cases, but for this one, I'm curious, if they wanted to get a type 47 and serve hard liquor, would they have to come back and get a new, they would have to come back to the planning commission to request that?
I believe so. I don't know if there's, they definitely have to change their CUP license, so I would, yeah, I think the answer is correct. They could possibly get an MCUP for a modification to the CUP. That's a possibility, but that's if staff believed it was something that they felt comfortable approving.
Right.
So I think it would be the requirement for an MCUP, but I don't think staff would be, it wouldn't be something staff would be comfortable with.
Right, okay. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Got a couple of questions, Madison and Mr. C. So this restroom that's accessible from the outside bothers me. And I would want to make sure that it was not used by customers, that it was not available or accessible to them. If there was a condition of approval that restricted the use to that, would you have any objection to that?
No, I think it's weird as well. I was never planning on using it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, quick question. Are you referring to just employees only using it when you, when you say restricted? Or just not used at all?
Correct.
Employees only?
Employees only.
Yeah, we would have been in agreement with that.
Okay. So I don't know, Mr. Drapkin, if you, well, I'll come back to you with this question. So Stumpies was referenced in the staff report. I went to their website as part of the research, if you would give it that fancy of a name. They only allow people 18 and older to enter. Could you explain to me your rationale for allowing minors to enter?
Yeah, I think that's, one of the reasons is because they have beer and wine. So it's a part of the condition to their alcohol license where we are a type 40, which allows all ages to be able to be there. As far as having kids there, it is a very safe environment. It's a lot like bowling, but with cages around you, so I think it's even safer. The other thing is, we actually went axe-throwing with our nephew who's eight and he loved it. It was so fun watching him. There are axes that are smaller too, that he was able to be able to pick up and throw, which we would be able to provide. And the other thing is axes are actually super dull. Like you can't cut yourself on them, like if you were to like just slide it across your hand. They're very dull and that's because the wood that you're throwing into is very soft. So it's a little bit of like a magician's trick.
Okay. I'm not trying to be the fun police here, but that's why I was asking about that. Stumpies has something else, which is a $15 non-participant entry fee, and you don't have anything like that. Did you consider doing something like that? So the people didn't just come in, maybe not have a reservation, maybe wander over to the bar, maybe get lost in the crowd?
Well, there is a check-in desk. That's that little gray area at the front. So every person that comes in has to have a signed waiver. So there is kind of a person monitoring the door at all times. So no one can just walk in without a reservation. I don't think it's fair to charge people just to watch. I don't foresee this happening, except for if someone was to bring a child with them that's not going to participate. Or maybe they came as a family and they have an elderly person with them that doesn't want to participate, but they don't want to, you know, wait outside in the car. I wouldn't, I wouldn't tell them to do that. So no, I wouldn't charge people for that, but they would be able to still watch their family.
Okay. And then I want to follow up on a question that Commissioner Erath asked. I think it was him. So if a group of high schoolers came in, all carrying a piece of paper, the waiver, presumably signed by their legal guardian, but the guardian is not there, the parent is not there, they'd be allowed to participate?
Yes.
Okay. It's not a concern of the cities, but I am curious about the targets that are against the common wall with the vacant retail space. Have you given thought to what you might do if that becomes a problem when somebody decides they want to put their business there?
Yeah, so that's part of the really cool target design that we have, which is the end-grain targets that we speak about. My husband Luke is a carpenter and he's kind of invented this ingenious thing, which other people have already done, but we thought we were smart. Anyway, a normal target is usually like a pine piece of wood that has grain running up and down, kind of like this wall here. And it makes it so that axes can only stick if it goes perfectly in-grain with the wood. And that causes it to bounce a lot. And that's where you get your noise, is from all this bouncing of axes. So my husband had an idea to get a bunch of wood, like four-by-four posts, cut them on end so you have that circle piece. And then it allows it so the ax can be thrown any which way and it will stick no matter what.
So can I save a little time on that? So your answer is basically, you don't think it's going to be a problem?
No, I think we've designed our targets to be as soundproof as possible.
All right. And then the thing I'm wondering about with regard to noise, so I don't see a vestibule entrance, I just see double doors. And I'm imagining people going in and out of those doors continuously up until 11 o'clock or 10:30 and 11:00 before the music is turned off. And I'm wondering if every time those doors are open, if the sound isn't just going to go right across that parking lot into the adjacent neighborhood? And have you given thought to the design of your entrance with regard to the noise?
Yeah, so that's why the targets are where they are. There's as far away from that entrance as possible.
I'm not talking about the noise of the axes hitting the target. I'm talking about the music.
Oh, okay. I think the sound of the axes is going to be much louder than the music. That's, like I said, it's not a party atmosphere. It's more of like a restaurant, there's music in the background.
Okay, all right. You mentioned something about 15-year-olds and I don't, again, I don't think it matters that much to us, but when I looked at your letter, you only referenced that 10 years and above, up to 18, could participate. But you drew some other line at the age of 15. Could you elaborate on that and why that wasn't in your letter?
Yeah, I think it's something that we've decided, I guess, recently or we didn't, I'm not too sure. But ages 14 and under will need to be, will need to have a parent or guardian accompany them there. Whereas 15, 16, and 17 will be able to come on their own as long as they have a signed waiver. But if you're younger than that, then you'll need to have a parent there to, to be a second set of eyes to watch over.
Got it, okay. Thank you very much. No more questions from me at this point. Any questions, Commissioners?
I do have a quick question. How are the kids between the ages of 14 to 17 going to get their waiver? And do you have any way of checking on whether the parent or guardian signed it? I mean...
Well, we, so my other business is I own an escape room. So we also have waivers for that too. I plan to use the same system. So the waivers are something that can be downloaded online and they can sign it and bring it with them. Or there's also an option to do a digital waiver when they're there. As far as knowing which parent is which child, I don't think there's any way for anyone to know that for sure because children don't have IDs. I'm not too sure. But it is something that, the waiver is just something that will protect us and that is just the level of protection that it gives. That's true. This is more of an adult activity, especially since we are, we have the bar as well. So I do expect this will be more for ages 21 and up. I don't, especially since it's a horror-themed experience, I don't see this as really being much of a younger generation place.
Okay, yeah. Thank you.
I do have a follow-up question. So how do you then plan to verify a kid's age and see if they're actually 15 or, you know, maybe they're not 15 and, you know, they're 14-year-old saying they're 15 and say, yeah, I have a signed, you know, whatever, can I come in and play? I don't know how you'd enforce that if you're saying you, you know, kids don't have IDs. Well, I had an ID since I was maybe 12. So kids can have IDs. And then there's also school IDs, which oftentimes also have a kid's age. So I, do you have a way of actually checking a kid's age then?
I don't believe school IDs are allowed to show ages. I'm familiar with that. I do think it's going to be open to the discretion of the staff members. That's the same way we treat our escape room. And then same thing, if we get a group of rowdy 16-year-olds, like, we could also just be like, absolutely not, and deny them service. Or we can require a parent to be there. This is kind of a house rule that we're doing in addition to the other safety precautions that we're taking.
Okay. But no, like checking IDs, because like I said, underage people do carry IDs sometimes.
Yeah, I have not seen that. That's news to me. I know, like, they have birth certificates and stuff that if necessary, if you'd like us to ask for those, we can. I just, I don't know if people feel comfortable walking around with those.
No, no. So the DMV does offer IDs to maybe 12-year-olds and up. So, you know, I'm not going to make this a condition or anything, but I would just encourage you to maybe do something like that, to have a little bit more of an extra barrier, I guess, security to kind of just make sure that, you know, your own rules are being followed. But that's it. So that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, thank you. You can have a seat for a few minutes and I'll open the public comments. If you'd like to speak to this item, please approach the podium. Yes, sir.
Thanks for your patience. Jay Humphrey, Coast Mesa resident. I note that there is no chain-link fence between the viewing seats behind the people who are throwing axes. We had a lot of conversation about the concern about accidents if somebody, if an ax bounces off the target. Clearly, it's never to get back to those people. But you've all been bowling. In fact, the applicant brought up the fact, this is kind of like bowling. You've all been bowling when somebody on their backswing with the ball let go of it and it bounced on the floor and rolled into the people sitting around behind it. But it did not, being round and heavy, it did not cause a lot of damage. I wonder what one of these axes would happen if on the backswing, somebody let go of it and there's nothing to stop that ax from going back into the viewing area, which is about 10 feet away from the throwing line. They've got chain-link between every one of the lines and I They've got chain link between every one of the lines, and I think it's great. And I have no problem. Like, people go out and go to shooting ranges and go to bow and arrow ranges, and I don't have any problem with that. But maybe the accidents that we're concerned about are more of a risk of it coming backwards rather than it going forward. Because the forward, they've done a lot of things to make sure that's safe. Let's make sure that it's safe behind them also. So if it does get loose, an axe is still an axe, hatchet or not. In fact, somebody doing a backswing with a hatchet may, in fact, actually get further distance with it behind it when it lets go of it because of the very size and shape of it. That's my primary concern of this project, and I don't see anything in that. One of the concerns I had, by the way, is I could not find any of the condition of uses in the staff report available to me online. So you may want to... Somebody may need to deal with that within the system. So it was hard for you to know if they'd put, you know, some kind of protection in there specifically, or if you guys had pulled that. Under that, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir. Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or the telephone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If the applicant would like to come back up and make any closing remarks?
I was just going to respond to the comment. So the biggest reason why axe-throwing venues do not have anything behind you is because that could actually be more of a hindrance to your throw and dangerous. You could have it behind you, and then it could get caught on something, and now you have no idea where it's going. So that's the reason why there's nothing behind you. The other reason it's not a concern is during our teaching of how to throw an axe, it's not like throwing a baseball, where you have like this really big, forceful wind-up. It's really more of like a lob, almost like darts. So you keep your arm at an elbow, and you kind of just throw it from here. It's not like a big swing, if that makes sense. I'm doing my best.
Thank you. Any more questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Erith, question?
A question for staff.
Oh, we're done?
Not for the applicant, though.
Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. After all of this discussion, has staff taken note of any additional conditions of approval along the way? I just wanted to take an inventory of where we're at.
There was a concern about having wood chips for... at the floor level of the throwing areas. There was also obviously concerns about the waiver and the children using the facility. There were some responses to, with regards to their rear wall. There were some questions about the rear wall and the maximum height of that wall allowed in the commercial zone. It actually is... The minimum is six feet, and the maximum is eight feet. So I looked that up. There were some questions about the selling of harder alcohol, but I don't think that relates to a condition. There was obviously the last... One of the latter ones were the bathroom servicing that with the exterior door only to employees. And the only other one that I can think of worth mentioning is probably the ambient noise coming from the music, which I think was answered by the applicant as not to be excessive, more likely oriented towards the axe-throwing areas, and not come out the door, and staff could respond with a condition that limits that. But that's, other than that, nothing.
Okay. And as far as light study... Pardon me. As far as the light study is concerned, that would be a redundancy, kind of a catch-all?
Yeah, I think so, because staff has added a condition that light could not go off-site, so I don't... I think you don't need to study that.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Drapkin. Chair, that's all for me, thank you.
All right. Close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for motion.
I do have one final question, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just of staff.
All right, go ahead.
So I was just wondering, does the truck restriction also apply to garbage trucks? Garbage truck operations? Because we've done that here on commission before for projects abutting residential. So would that apply to garbage truck operations as well?
The only thing that I hesitate to say yes or no it doesn't is because the... They have a revolving schedule that the trash companies work off of. I don't think it's problematic if we did require them to comply with that condition, though. So to not go earlier than that. I don't see too many commercial trash companies that work less, that work under 7:00 AM, so that doesn't seem like a problem to me.
I think we've used under 8:00 PM, but under 8:00 AM, I can't remember, but yeah, that's fine. Yeah. All right. That's it from me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
All right. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Vivar.
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion that we approve planning application PA 22-dash... 22-26 for an axe-throwing facility with alcohol sales at 1941 Newport Boulevard with the condition that the exterior restroom be limited to employees only.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Toller, second. Commissioner Vivar, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, sir. I just want to thank staff for going above and beyond with this application in going ahead and doing that research about parking demands. I know that I previously made some noise about something else we approved that, in my opinion, didn't have proper study... A proper parking study done, or traffic circulation study done for that kind of use. So I'm really happy to see that we have hard numbers to look at. So as an engineer, I like that engineers like seeing hard numbers where they can, as opposed to just using theoretical models or best estimates. So I applaud staff for that. And I also want to thank the applicant for going above and beyond, in my opinion, to make sure that they are operating as safely as possible in terms of doing their research on other businesses that kind of serve a similar use, and taking best practices from ministry, and coming up with creative ways to make this a safe and fun activity for people in the community and in Orange County and surrounding cities to participate. And so I feel very confident about this, and I think this would be a great use and encourage the applicant to, you know, to continue to apply that same spirit of wanting to do the best they can in being a great, good neighbor with the abutting uses and with any potential future tenant that may occupy the abutting space. And so that's a comment to my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Toller, speak to your second, if you wish.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, these... The applicants seem very knowledgeable about this industry, very professional. I have full confidence that they'll do a great job with the place, given that this dilapidated building that is problematic for a number of reasons. It's going to come back to life, right? And that's a good thing. Just for the sake of everybody that opens a staff report thinks the same thing, right? They say beer and throwing axes, and I think all of us had that reaction, like, "Oh, my God." And I know people might be watching, they're going to watch later when they hear about this. Here's the thing, it's just beer. You go for one or two hours. It's not enough time to get intoxicated. And if we're worried about the combination, it's either bar fights, or it's getting sloppy with the axes. I think getting sloppy with the axes, I don't think there's enough time to get that intoxicated. Bar fights happen. I used to work in bars for a long time. They happen late brunch, when you've been drinking all day, and they happen late at night on weekends, especially when there's hard liquor involved. I'm not worried about that. I think that's an instinct we all have, but when you think through it, it's like bowling. You go for a couple beers, you're paying a lot of money for this activity. I think, from what I've heard them say, they have a solid plan in place to keep things under control. I think any of the issues that we've talked about, lighting spillover, I don't think that's... I think we're doing what we can. I don't think it's the applicant's problem. I think that's the nature of car-oriented places. You can't really have pedestrian-scale lighting, right? And that's it. I think, you know, parking meets the ratios. It might get a little tight, but far be it from me to deny a young couple trying to start a business in an abandoned building because of something like that. So I wholeheartedly approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Russell.
This is going to be an interesting, I think, unique opportunity for Costa Mesa. We had one a couple of years ago that didn't go forward, for whatever reason. The only concern I have, and I think that you've said you're going to check into it, is that people throwing axes, drinking even a couple of beers, walking out into the parking lot at 10:30, that they're just going to quietly get into their cars and not hoop a couple of times. If you could, you know, really between maybe 9:30 and 11, have an extra staff person out there to just say, "Hey, remember, leave quietly, remember the neighbors." But other than that, I wish you good luck. I think it's exciting to see you guys trying something new, so I'll be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Russell. Commissioner Erith.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to the applicant for coming out. This is, I think, a rather exciting new use, and I appreciate you bearing with us while we contemplate this new thing. So thank you for allowing us that opportunity. I'll say it's pretty apropos to have a company called Slashers in the same month as Halloween. I thought it was really cool to get that. Again, I will be supporting the motion. I will be kind of echoing Commissioner Russell's comments about being mindful of the residential folks next door, and the noise that would be potentially generated from this use, but also to take a first, second, maybe a third look at the lighting spillover as well, and just to kind of take ownership of that as well. With that said, you know, welcome to Costa Mesa. That's it, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. I'll be supporting the motion, based on everything I've heard tonight. And I think in some respects, what I've heard tonight changed what I thought I was going to hear and what I thought I might conclude. And I think Commissioner Toller is right when he says that most people would probably have looked at this, or read about it in the paper after this, and think axe-throwing, beer-drinking, what could go wrong? And if they do what I did, and what apparently Commissioner Erith did, which has hit YouTube, you can see what goes wrong. Although I didn't see anybody hurt, I didn't see any paramedics. But I saw a lot of things going wrong, and I'm sure you're cognizant of those issues, and are obviously wanting to have a safe, enjoyable experience. Otherwise, your business wouldn't last. Staff recommends this approval. The police department has reviewed it. They don't have any issues with it. I thought we might have a bunch of residents come in and express concerns, concerns about noise. And that doesn't say that they're not concerned or won't become concerned. I think you've been here all night, you've probably heard one member of the public concerned about noise from a business near her. It's conceivable that that could someday be a problem that you'll have to contend with. And I like to tell people the conditions of approval that you see in here aren't just something that, you know, staff works up to, you know, show that they're professionals, because they are, but they have meaning, these conditions of approval. And if they're not followed, members of the public can raise issues, and we might be back here someday having a conversation. So... And you don't want that. I think Commissioner Russell makes an important point about particularly the evening, 9:00 on, 9:30 on. You know, when people leave your establishment, hopefully they're excited, they're happy, they had a blast. And I don't know that they're just going to quietly tiptoe out to their car and leave. People tend to stand around, especially if they came in a group, came in separate cars, talk about the great fun they had, talk about when they're going to get together next. I think you're going to want to discourage that, to the extent that that is a problem to the neighbors. And I think you'll find out quickly whether it is or not. So I really wish you good luck with your business. It is something a little bit new and unique to the city. We did have a business like this down on Placentia. They're not in business anymore. I wish you better luck, and thanks for investing in the community. Anna, roll call vote, please.
That motion carries 5-0 with Chair Diara Cole and Commissioner Rojas absent.
Thank you, Anna. That decision is final unless appealed to the City Council within seven days. Good luck to you. So we have no old business or new business. Move on to departmental reports, and Mr. Yang.
Yes, thank you very much, Vice Chair Zick. Nothing interesting to report, other than that I'd like to notify all the public who's watching here on YouTube or other means, that the city does have a Q Alert program. There are times when the public have certain issues or concerns that they see out there. We would like to welcome the public to kind of use our Q Alert program. You can find it on the city's website, you could just do a search, Q Alert Costa Mesa, and you'll find it immediately. And also, you can download the app on your personal smartphones, and that could be used to access and communicate with us to... For any kind of concerns out there. So that's all. I defer back to the Chair.
Thank you. How's that different from the Costa Mesa app that people use to report issues that they see as they're going around the city?
Essentially the same. It's called My Costa Mesa, I believe. So it's the same app, but on our end, it's called Q Alert.
Very good. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Development Services report, Mr. Drapkin?
Nothing tonight, Chair.
All right, thank you. And City Attorney report, Mr. Preziosi.
Nothing, Chair Zick.
All right, thank you for your help earlier this evening, and I will... Let's see. When is our next meeting, Mr. Drapkin? I don't see that.
October 24th.
October 24th. So I will adjourn our meeting until our next regularly scheduled meeting on October 24th. Good night, thank you, everyone.